Let the record show that Mr. Matthew Pujo has asked to record this part of the meeting, and he has been granted permission to do so in accordance with the open meeting law. And consider yourself all put on notice that you will be videotaped. Couple of things, we, board members, we have been asked to speak into our microphones because with the crowd, people in the hallway are having difficulty hearing us, so please, when you speak, use your microphone. So this is how this will play out. The applicant and its team will make a presentation. They are focusing on, tonight, they are focusing on the design of the building and the affordable housing aspect. They're not going to discuss parking, traffic, or anything else. Our discussion, and your discussion, please, will be limited to those two issues. Now, the board realizes, I think it's fair to say that the issues regarding design generally coalesce around a couple of issues. One is the size of the project. The second tends to be the idea that perhaps the project isn't capturing the historical significance of the district. And third, sometimes there's an, or there may be a question about preservation of either or both of the buildings. In an evening like this, with this many people, less is more. So what we're going to ask is that you limit your comments or questions to two minutes. And frankly, if you can simply say that you agree with some point that somebody else has made, that would be most appreciated. It counts just as much, it is as important, but with all due respect, if everybody here speaks for two minutes, we're gonna be here till midnight. So please, don't misunderstand, we're not downplaying the significance of having anybody speak. It's important your voice be heard, but in a case like this tonight, sometimes less is more, and if you can get up there and say, "I agree with what so-and-so said about this," that would be terrific.
And your point about parking and those other issues, those will be addressed at future meetings?
Absolutely. This meeting will not be closed tonight. We will, my guess, educated, is that it will be continued to the September, our September 10th meeting. So we will be back here then. So we will try and do our best to accommodate everybody tonight who wishes to speak, but again, I would simply, we would all simply ask for your cooperation in that. That being said, we'll ask the applicant to step forward.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm Miranda Gooding from Globski &amp; Globski, on behalf of the applicant, Beverly Crossing. With me here this evening is Chris Copeland from Beverly Crossing, and Thad Sumasco and Christopher Oils from SV Design, and also, I'm sorry, Kristen Poole is also here on behalf of Beverly Crossing. Thank you for laying out this evening's charge so clearly. We are going to focus on two areas, the building design, and actually, more appropriately, the building redesign. There have been quite a significant number of changes since this application was originally filed and the plans were originally submitted with the planning board. We are gonna focus on those plans this evening. And as the Chair mentioned, we are also gonna focus on our inclusionary housing compliance under the zoning bylaw. I'd like to make a quick note about the process and just emphasize something that the Chair alluded to, which is that nobody on this team anticipates that a decision will be rendered this evening, or at the board's September 10th meeting. We fully expect that there will be a number of public hearings before this board, as well as Design Review Board and Parking and Traffic, and that we anticipate going into October. We are not, and we have not, been asking any of the boards to make a premature decision, nor have we been asking anybody to render decisions on plans that they have not had an opportunity to fully vet, and we have no intention of doing so. All of us both work in this community, many of us live in this community. It's terrific to see so many familiar faces here this evening, and I'd echo your comments that it means a lot, that this site means so much to people, and I think that everybody on this team takes that very seriously, and we want to have the best process possible, both for us and for the community. And with that said, I would like to turn the mic over to Chris Copeland for some preliminary comments regarding something else that we know is on everybody's mind, which is the situation with the historic tax credits.
Thank you, Miranda. Chris Copeland, Beverly Crossing. Madam Chair, members of the planning board, thank you for listening, particularly members of the public. I want to publicly acknowledge that a large part of the controversy in lead-up surrounding this project is rooted in our own actions, in our own decisions, and our own credibility. Our proposal does call for the demolition of contributing buildings in a historic district. We recognize that. It's a district that was sponsored by prior leadership of this company, leadership that's no longer here, and the partners of this company that secured historic tax credits that ultimately created Veterans Housing at 60 Pleasant Street. The credits were syndicated or sold to investors. We never knew any of these investors. Every dollar of those tax credits went into the Veterans Housing. It was used to create that housing. It's a subsidy equity mechanism that enables the creation of that project. That mechanism, we've studied, and it does not translate to this block in the same way. But I want to ensure, and it's made clear for the record tonight, that we did not take nor receive any tax breaks. We didn't buy or use the credits. We made zero profit on that project as a developer. As a co-developer, in fact, we still carry a six-figure loss on a note to this day. It was never about money. Our founder, Steve Dodge, bought the building. It was covered in metal. We noticed underneath it was a fantastic building. It was a solid building, and it deserved to be saved, it deserved to be put into good use at that point. The preservation and the veterans won that project. We're proud of what we did for those veterans, and they've earned it. No one at that time predicted all the immediate, or certainly collateral impacts of those decisions that led to where we are today. We live these complexities of what happened every day. We regard the collective meaning of all of it as very simple. We had good intentions that ultimately led to an erosion of public trust, and we recognize Plain and simple, this weighs happily on us, on the team. It's uncharacteristic, doesn't look good, it doesn't feel good, this team, and I in particular wear the scars for that, and on behalf of Beverly Crossing and the people of Beverly, I'm sorry. Like a lot of situations that carry this kind of magnitude, it's not always black and white. We followed laws, we followed rules, rules that not everyone necessarily agrees with, and in hindsight, we should've handled them differently with higher integrity and respect. As much as these events have shaken our reputation and public trust, we remain steadfast in believing in this great city, in this block, and in a revised application before you, as we believe it will stand the test of time through quality of design and materials, but we look forward to dialogue tonight. This depot area does matter. It's a newly formed neighborhood. We're striving for the best outcome. It's not just another six-story building to us, and we take this very seriously. I want to use this important juncture, I think Steve Dodge, we owe it to him, passed away on January 17th, and what he has done for the city in regarding preservation. That's a picture of 60 Pleasant Street. Thirty-two units of Veterans Housing, that's what was created from these tax credits that were made. Forty-five Broadway, Dr. Kowalski, the building that we purchased in 2012, we saved it from demolition and moving the North Shore Veterans out of a deteriorated press box. That building stands today, I know it just got painted, it looks fantastic. We've restored McKay through a public RFP process. Thirty-two units, four of them are affordable. It stands today. We're proud of that project. Fifty Broadway, we purchased that last year. No intention today of doing anything to it. It's a fantastic building, so I found the post office. We and Steve Dodge in particular have had a serious commitment to the Cabot Cinema, Endicott College, Montserrat College of Art, Prospect Hill Powderhouse. We are committing $25,000 to that, we've done that, that was several years ago. We donated to the Balch House, Changes Simple, Ryle Side Homecoming, Harbor Light &amp; More. We tried to save St. Mary's. We put in a high offer to make a boutique hotel and save that building, it didn't work. I don't think today it's sold or transacted. We agree Briscoe should absolutely be saved. We didn't apply for that or do anything with that. The Gar Hall looks fantastic. These contributions, charitable and other, Essex County Foundation, seven-figure numbers that have been contributed to this city. Took it seriously, and we really miss Steve. With that, and despite comments that you might hear tonight, we've studied this block extensively for years, approaching hundreds of iterations, conversations, tax credit programs, studies, feasibility. We've put this architect through a series of all kinds of iterations to make sure this block can and will work. Reasonable people can differ on how they or we should prioritize preservation efforts and what the best tools are to achieve it. We applaud the efforts that are now underway with this planning, master plan for historic preservation in Beverly, we support that. And based out of the last Design Review Board meeting, we would like to make it clear that for anyone who would like to preserve the Casa de Luca building or the others, we'll be happy to assist them when we're using them on another site. We've studied that too. But we've derived at what's before you tonight, because feasibility takes many forms. Mr. Barrett, in particular, you asked why six stories, others may be thinking the same. We need this size project, this height, to cover escalating construction costs, they are really high. To pay for the onsite parking garages, over $5 million alone, to deliver the facades, the step backs, everything that folks expect in quality, and cladding, and precast, and brick, to be able to operate with the utmost professionalism that I think we do and our team does that, we're right on Rantoul Street, they're very devoted people, and we're proud of them. So in closing, I just want to say that Beverly's historic assets are part of what makes this community so special. We invest in them. It's a big part of why our company has invested, just in real estate, almost $130 million to date. The incremental tax base that this project and others that have provided aren't just good, they're necessary, that came out of the master planning session that I attended. We believe a walkable city is good, housing near the train is good, and we'll be invested well over $170 million if this project were to go forward. We hope to continue the support. This is a very special place. Our founder believed that, and we want to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. With that in mind, I'm just gonna quickly review where we are in terms of relief required and the process. As a reminder, we are here seeking site plan review, but also a special permit under the tall building ordinance for buildings over 55 feet in height and up to 75 feet. A special permit to basically apply the depot parking overlay, parking requirements to the rear portion of this site, which, as I'll explain in a minute, was omitted from that overlay when the district was created in 2011. And finally, we are here to request approval of an inclusionary housing application. This is not a special permit request, this is a straight application for the application of previously approved credit units by this board. Just quickly to summarize the project, we've got a roughly 29,000 square foot acre site in the heart of the city's commercial zoning district, and in the, really, the center of its TOD district. It is overlaid by the height overlay district, as well, as I said before, a portion of the depot parking overlay district, all of which have been enacted since approximately 2007 to promote TOD development in this area. This site doesn't require any setbacks at all, because we are in the CC district. Height, as I said, is allowed up to 75 feet by special permit. We are proposing for a portion of the sixth floor that it would, excuse me, for a portion of the building, the sixth floor would go up to 73 feet in height by special permit. Since we are now here asking permission to, for the project to, that includes 111 units down from the 115 that were originally submitted, a lot of those units and the mass came off of the top floor, which Thad will walk through. We will have six accessible units in the project, there's no change there. A slight change, because of the unit count going down, we actually, the affordable requirement went down under the ordinance from 10 units to nine units. And then, in terms of parking, so for retail requirements, based on the square foot area of the proposed ground floor retail space, there are 29 parking spaces that are required under the zoning ordinance. We are allowed to meet those within our on-street frontage, and for the commercial spaces, and we have 31 spaces, that's down from 32. Thad will explain that change as well, but we still meet the requirement. And then for the housing, at 111 units, we are proposing one space per unit, which is satisfied by the 115 spaces in the garage. We're gonna have about four spaces extra, I'll get to that in a moment. This plan just is meant to highlight sort of the, sorry, I should know the pointer thing. There we go. So this hatch line here is the parking overlay district, and basically what happened here is, this site is comprised of five different lots. When the ordinance went into effect in 2011, these lots were not in common ownership. The ordinance defined the overlay district by lots having frontage on Rantoul Street, resulting in, I think, to everybody's surprise, a configuration that lops off the back of the parcel, which ironically is a parcel that is closer than any other parcel in the city to Beverly Depot. So for that reason, we are requesting that the board essentially treat the whole parcel as being within the CC overlay district, which instead of requiring two parking spaces for two-bedroom units, would only require one parking space for one-bedroom units, consistent with the other projects that the board has approved throughout the past 10 years or so at this point. And just a little bit more on this, when we actually boil it down, I think it's interesting to note that there are 17 two-bedrooms proposed in the building as a whole. Ten of them are actually in the front half of the building, and so technically do not require relief, because they are within the overlay district, and the one-for-one ratio is permitted. Seven of them are in the rear of the building, and there, the underlying zoning would require 14 spaces, two per unit. Because we have a couple of, we have four extra units in the garage, we actually almost meet that anyway. We have a deficiency of three spaces after all is said and done, taking into effect the overlay. So we think it's a reasonable request for a special permit in this case, for the reasons I've outlined previously. I guess I would just say, I would just emphasize one other thing before I turn this over to Thad. We just want you to know, and I think it's important for the public to know, that the plans that you are seeing this evening on the screen are materially the same as those that were submitted to the board in the package submitted on August 12th. There have been some minor design tweaks, those are reflected in what you're going to see this evening. We sent the planning department copies of those plans earlier today, and I'm sure they will be uploaded. And then I wanted to let folks know that we anticipate, based on feedback here this evening, that we will be submitting a new set of plans. Unclear on what they will look like precisely, but the next deadline for the Design Review Board is August 28th, and if these plans are reviewed favorably, we'll be submitting them to the Design Review Board for consideration at September meeting, or make tweaks as the case may be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to be here. I'm a fast talker, there's a lot of information, I'll try to get through it as quickly as I can so you can get to questions. Basically, the resubmitted design reflected feedback we got from the Design Review Board, and some very initial feedback from the planning board. And the three issues that we were asked to address were reducing the mass and the scale of the original submission, make the treatment, aesthetic treatment of the building more historic, and make more of a connection of our building to the park and to the post office. So we took that charge seriously, and we have produced another set of plans, which we'll show you tonight, and as Miranda mentioned, there have been submitted, you can all take a peek. But basically, as, the garage plan has not changed. What, the top of the sheet is Park Street. It's a two-layer garage, you enter the upper level from the end of Park Street, and the garage from Rantoul Street is completely varied. It comes out of the ground about a story, because the gray drops a story as you go from front to back. As Miranda mentioned, all of the parking for the project residentially is in the building. There's also places for trash and recycling rooms for the various tenants. There's bike storage rooms, and there's two elevators that serve the upper level of the building. You have a nice, safe, secure parking garage for residents, again, with bike storage, trash taken care of, and so forth. As you go up to the main level, Rantoul Street's the bottom of the sheet here, the orange spaces represent potential commercial, retail, restaurant spaces. There are three of them that kind of work around, it's a C-shaped building that faces the park, and this courtyard here is meant to be a pedestrian kind of plaza that folks can get on and use, and I'll get into that in a second. Because the building does come out of the ground, these places here are residential units, which will be up off the street, and the green is actually the residential common space entry, where there's fitness room, some private office, mailroom, package room, that kind of thing, as well as an outdoor residential courtyard. One thing we're asked to do was be sure that the connection of this plaza to the park and to the sidewalk was much more porous than we had, and that's what these arrows are indicating, a very complete connection of our plaza to the courtyard and a widening of the stairway to get you out onto the sidewalk. As you go up to the second, third, and fourth floor, they're essentially identical, the blue colors are one-bedroom units, the light purple are studios, and the orange are two-bedrooms. You can see the majority are one-bedroom units. They make this C shape, form around the courtyard, as we mentioned. The only change from the original filing was, we were asked to make this recess a bit deeper, because we're changing the elevation, or we're making the elevation from Rantoul Street appear to be more like it's two buildings than one, given the length of the building. More substantial changes happened on the fifth floor, when you get up past the fourth story, toll building guidelines talk about making this cornice at the fourth story, and then you set the building back in. Particularly toward the park area, we pushed the building back in. Again, it's a U-shaped building facing the park, and we took some of the volume away. On the corner, the toll building guidelines refer to a prominent corner, they actually asked for the maximum height to be on the corner right here of Rantoul and Railroad. We had it as six stories, we brought it down to five stories. We had it as a wider building, 60-foot, 5 inches wide, which is up 38 percent of the width of the building. We brought that down to 31 percent and 50 feet wide. Mind you, we're measuring now at the fifth story, not the sixth story, which the toll building guidelines imagine. The reason we kept it 50 feet wide, we'll show you when we show you the exterior of the building, it just, it makes for a nicely proportioned building, which I'll explain in a minute. But do note that the amount of volume that was taken away off of the park side to lessen the impact of this building on the park. Sixth floor, it was dramatically reduced. Toll building talks about 50 percent of this area, this building should be 50 percent of the lot area, we've achieved that number, clearly pushed the building in dramatically off of the park, and inset it from the all sides around, so that that sixth floor is as innocuous as it can possibly be, and it's as least impactful as it can possibly be. Says in the zoning, toll building guidelines, again, that getting the mass to the back, where it's not the residential zone, unlike the other side of the street, is encouraged, where that's an industrial zone, where 60 Pleasant is, and the depot, train, where the railroad tracks are. And so we kind of pushed the mass up toward that back corner. Again, an array of units, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, a few studios. So here's what the building looks like from Rantoul Street. We've basically taken 135 foot, I believe it is, length of building, and broken up into two major sections, a really nicely proportioned four-story horizontal building, glass right on the street, street canopy. Eroded the corner, so it's a little less dense on the corner. We have a nice three-part window, these two windows join together, make a nice vertical presentation. We sort of aggregated the balconies, those are recessed in, so that there's, so it's less dense of a building by pushing those together, and adds some more interest to the building. Then we have this break that separates the two parts, and then a really nicely proportioned, more vertical building that you see here. This now starts to appear like the post office, which has an architrave, cast stone, kind of a classic base shaft capital arrangement. It is five stories, it's trying to be strong on the corner, but also, again, it's down a notch from what it was. The fifth and sixth floor do step back, and they're going to be rendered, materialized in a smooth, very lighter, almost ethereal kind of gray, so they kind of go back into the atmosphere, and will be less prominent from the street. I have some cross-sections will show you how a pedestrian might perceive those fifth and sixth floors. The brick used here is a very, will be a very traditional red brick. There are things that are hard to see from this drawing of corbelled arches. The top, every place where brick terminates, has a corbelled cornice that will help define that end better. There's a lot of details baked into this building, but let's, and I would say, there's also a colonnade here, so pedestrians who enter the plaza here can come across laterally, and those who have mobility issues can get into this space, where again, this is glass right on the street. Ideally, this is a market, and ideally, this is perhaps a restaurant, which has outdoor eating areas. We did hold the building 25 feet from the property line, which is two-thirds of the width of this room, not much, but enough for folks to be able to get onto the plaza and enjoy it. And it's actually 20 feet from the edge of this covered porch, this portico that we've added, which I'll show you right now. So we looked at the post office, James Knox Taylor did this in 1910, neoclassical, he worked for the Treasury Department, these things are all over the country, I understand that very few of them have a pitched roof, but what it does have is this cool portico, this architrave, columns, the recessed panels, vertical windows, this really gracious set of steps that come down, and we took that, I think Mrs. Hutchison asked us to look closely at this and try to get some of these elements into the building, which I think we did. This is a sandstone exterior, we're looking at a cast stone exterior, for this is now the railroad avenue view. The building has two legs, as I mentioned, C-shaped, so deep inset is the entrance to the residential, and there are two legs. This leg here is more of a mill feeling, industrial mill feeling, that relates to the 60 Pleasant Street, the Van Ness Building, National Grid all down that side. This side here is more classical, with again, that base shaft capital idea, cast stone. It is prominent, but it's not as prominent, it's not six stories any longer, but we feel it's strong, we feel as you're coming down Rantoul Street heading south, this is gonna sit there quite prominently with this, again, this architrave portico here. Lots of details, recessed panels and so forth that you see on the post office building, windows vertically handled, just like the post office, that kind of thing. So this is a five-story building, only on this corner, then it steps back. This is a four-story building with two steps back, fifth floor and sixth floor. The deep courtyard entrance for residential is four-story, and it steps back for the fifth and sixth floor. As you turn the corner and go, see this, it's from the train, the train tracks are actually the elevation of this yellow line, so it takes out a little bit of it. There's a couple of tall trees that kind of come up to about this point in here, that help also take a little bit out of, a little bit out of play. We carry the brick around the corner as far, essentially as the press box does now, I'll show you the picture what that means in a second. We have stepped the fifth floor and the sixth floor back from this four-story cornice line, so you will read that cornice line is a four-story, and then there's two steps And then there's two steps back. That four-story runs around the entire building, except again for that prominent corner on Rantoul and Railroad. This is our entrance into our parking garage. Places where we think there were good places for some public art have been added in the courtyard, in places like this. We've tried to do things like get our emergency generated hidden maneuvers. We've worked these corners again to be more transparent, a little bit lighter in feeling. We've tried to aggregate balconies and so forth to try to get some interest, visual interest in the building as it moves around the corner. This is the depot square condo, also has that same cornice height, and then comes up a floor. We're at a bit of an angle with their mansard. We're coming up a couple of floors of that kind of angle. This is sort of classic tall building guidelines stuff, in five up 10, in five up 10 kind of treatment. As you probably all know, as you come up the other way up Pleasant toward our site, the building's essentially out of view because of the train and the pedestrian crossing. And then this is when you come off the train and you look to your right, this is essentially what you see now. So that brick portion of the building that you see here from there to there is essentially what you will see from there to there. So the rest of this building, sorry, this whole section occurs in that fairly small slice right there. So while this appears to be fairly massive, I think for folks coming from the train will experience it a little bit differently. Do note, this is, you know, it's essentially a four-story building. We're taller, but we're not that much taller. And we are setting a wall building on that corner, which I think is appropriate to help frame the park. This is what you see from Pleasant Street. The depot square wasn't in the way. We have it as you're coming up Rantoul Street. You'll see brick as you just saw by the corner. This is that retail space turning the corner. Again, four-story cornice. These two floors are stepped back. We aggregated again all the decks and got some real perforation so the length of the building will feel less long. As you come out of the Court Street driveway, we've kept some of this brick here so you can appreciate the brick as you come in to the building, as you come toward the building. We do have a door for move-in day and for trash-taking-out kind of thing on the side of Pleasant Street to try to keep folks off of Park Street and Rantoul, of course. Okay, so if you get closer and look at some of the details here, you'll see the precast cornice work, the columns, some of the panel work we're envisioning, even some of the brick work, the corbling across the cornice, which you kind of see here. Basically, looking at other buildings in the area, incorporating some of those details. We don't expect to be nearly this elaborate. We don't think that's appropriate, but we do think, you know, step cornice to end the brick, that kind of thing makes some sense. We have some arches incorporated on occasion. We have cast headers like you might see here, and some of the other mill buildings, headers and sills occasionally show up. Courtyard, basically, we'd like, this is basically level. So a pedestrian coming off of Rantoul Street can enter the courtyard. There's actually a couple of benches here. This is that portico with a different set of pavers. There's an array of trees and planters as you come down through here. This whole section, all of these represent the stairs that get you down onto the sidewalk. So like the post office, except not nearly as many steps, there's a continuous run of steps onto the sidewalk from the plaza. We have our transformer located here. It's up on the decks, so we don't have to put 18 yellow foliage around it. We have some opportunities here for seated benches. There are benches shown in between these trees. This area here is meant for an outdoor cafe. This place for public guard in this green area where we're going to be humping it up. You can get some good landscape. There's a tree actually planned for there. There's a place to take your dog out. And this is a residential courtyard area in here. I didn't mention, there's a covered porch of sorts that helped reduce the apparent mass of the building right here with some outdoor dining that's on that ground level. So if there's a coffee shop in this place, folks can kind of come out and have some seating there. We're planting street trees in appropriate places, you know, and there's a full landscape plan that's part of the, you know, that's part of the package. This is what the building looks like if it's redesigned with the two legs, if you will, looking down the length of the street from the homes building or from the gateway to the homes to depot square to us. And then turning the corner, coming down Rantoul, you get a good piece of this cast corner. Then there's some good relief. The steps I mentioned are all along this line that gets you off of that plaza, onto the sidewalk. And then there's this four-story element here that's, again, set back on that. That is defining the street corner more prominently. You can see this colonnade that runs down here, sort of a portico of sorts for the entrance to this space, as well as another portico that has been added there. Just a note, the zoning talks about activated ground floor uses in poor pedestrian areas, which basically means they want this stuff to be vital and folks to use it. There's seven major sort of cottels of it. We have met all seven. They have to do with openness and height and doorways and so forth that make folks want to be able to come and engage with the building. Again, we've looked at those carefully in our design for both Rantoul and Railroad meets those guidelines, which is what they apply to. There are tall building guidelines. I've mentioned them before. There are 27 guidelines specifically regarding height. We've met all of them except six, which some of the reasons I mentioned, like they really wanted a six-story corner. We didn't think that made sense. They wanted the corner right on the property line. We thought giving us some room to get on that plaza made sense. There's a cornice that's supposed to be 45 feet, but we wanted to match all the other cornices, which is 47. So those are the kind of reasons why we didn't quite hit the guidelines. Additionally, they talk about 25 different things that we basically adhered to, except the transform, which they wanted buried in the vault, which National Grid doesn't want to do. So, going as fast as I can. So back to context, mass scale, and the connection to the park, real quick. Hopefully, these will help. We did look at all the buildings on one side of Rantoul Street, which are all of these, and, you know, generally what their height is, what their mass is, what their materials are. They tend to be browner in tone versus the other side of the street where they tend to be redder and a little more mill-like in tone. We took all that into account as we worked into the design of our building. Likewise, we've got some of the back streets, River Street, look at Van Ness. We did look at Quarter Mill, Pleasant, Gateway. Just to get, and even the National Grid building, just to get some hints, you might have noticed on, we have a tower of this, of sort of like that on Park Street that we picked up for our stair tower. And we just kind of generally look at how big are the buildings around here? Here we are here relative to the other buildings, you know, we overcrowded and we're outright, you know, how does this sort of fit scale-wise? Then we looked at this. Interestingly enough, I didn't notice this, and all the times I've been down the street, there is an eight-and-a-half-foot elevation difference from here to here. This building sits eight-and-a-half feet lower than the gateway. So even when you add the 69-foot height, it's, because it's sort of in that hole, it is not quite as tall as you might expect. All that said, we are carrying this 47-foot height, which matches depot square as our main cornice line. Then we go up, we are 69 feet at our, where we do the sixth floor. Again, that's set back. Our prominent corner is at 64. Interestingly, the homes building is 201 feet across. We are two-thirds of that, 134 feet across. Our building is, again, is divided more into two smaller parts. This is 98 feet, the depot square, in one big kind of lump. Neither of our lumps, if you will, is that wide. This is where the tall building guidelines kind of work. If you're standing on the sidewalk or grand tool looking at this building, that's the fourth-floor cornice. And then the setbacks, basically this building steps back. Planning Department, the tall building guidelines actually say this should go back 10 and straight up. Planning Department urges us to actually put this extra five-foot step in there so the building is less top-heavy. So we've gone ahead and done that. We do think it makes the building less top-heavy than having the straight sheer 10-foot setback. Again, just if you are looking at this building from the park, how this works, distances from the property line. This building sits on the property line, except for the 10-foot covered porch area I mentioned. The fifth and sixth floor are back, 25 feet and 37 feet. This whole section here is back 85 feet, and then 90 feet further back from the property line. Our prominent corner, our portico, is 20. The main part of the building's 25. And then this five-story piece is 37. The point of all this is, you look at this drawing, you think this is a large building, but if you think about how it's articulated, articulating in and out, and if you look at the rendering, you can kind of see that it's not, it's not as massive as you might We looked at the park. All this red indicates where you want to connect to the park. We were trying to get parking traffic to think about a mid-block crosswalk to get even more connection to the park. Worst cases, we're going to widen this and have that connection to the park. Distances from the post office to the corner of our building is 213 feet, Krista? 215, which today we've measured is from here to A&amp;B Burger is 215 feet apparently. It's that, you know, it's that far away. Likewise, the distance from here to the depot is the same, about 215 feet. So a good distance away. The flats is a five-story building on the corner that's 132 feet away. I don't think anyone thinks that building is imposing on, I don't think it's imposing on the post office. We're diagonally across the street all the way to here at 213, and our prominent corner is at 269 feet from that corner. In terms of the gateway idea, for me, when you get off the train and you've arrived in Beverly, the front door of the train should connect to a gate right here that gets you into the park. And if I'm coming to the, those of us on the Broadway study group talked about how everyone downtown would want to come down this pedestrian route and come through here and get to the depot. This would be a gate point for pedestrians coming to the park. For me, that's where the gates really are. These buildings on this side should kind of just act as sort of walls that are helping defining the edge of the park and reinforcing the edge of the park. We have, for better or worse, a double-loaded parking area between us and the park. So it's 100, I think it's almost 80 feet from our property line to the first blade of grass in the park. It's a substantial difference, distance from our building to the park. That shows up here a little bit better, I think. If you're a pedestrian standing on the sidewalk at the farmer's market and you look up at our prominent corner, that's kind of the angle you'd be looking at. If you're across the street, the trees that are on the park are going to prevent you from actually seeing that corner. When you get down to the section of the building nearest the depot, you can see how effective these step backs are. A pedestrian here looking up at the building, the actual fifth and sixth floor essentially disappeared. And likewise, over here, the trees take out the view of the building. And actually, if you go in the park and you look at the building, look at the site, the site is behind these trees. There's the 131 building. This is mid-park. This is down by the depot. These, I understand it's summer, you can't see through trees, but these are very densely branched trees, and I think they're going to provide a pretty effective stream. They are all along the property line of the park, if you will, adjacent to that park area. So they're there, they're pretty substantial. Last, I think the sun studies we looked at, there are the equinox, you know, March and September '21. The morning sun, as it comes to the middle of the day, gets to 3:00 PM. The very end of the day, it just starts to clip the corner of the park. Summer solstice, there's no impact at all on the park. In the winter, as the sun, you know, 3:00 PM, about an hour before it's gone, it does come across the park. I'd argue at that point, the trees that are already on that side of the park will shade that part of the park as it is. And I think with that, I will turn over and around.
All right. Thank you, Sad. Quickly, I would like to run through, or not quickly, but I would like to run through the inclusionary housing application for the board. So briefly, the zoning ordinance allows developers of new construction or those who renovate and enhance existing residential units above a certain amount to provide onsite affordable hous, excuse me, to provide affordable housing that's commensurate with the new construction. And there are percentages, as the board is familiar with, laid out in the ordinance for what is required. What members may not be as familiar with is the fact that the ordinance allows multiple ways to satisfy that requirement. The first is by providing the units onsite, which is done as a matter of right. There are also three mechanisms that are allowed by special permit for satisfying the affordable housing requirement. And again, these are not variances, these are special permits. These were mechanisms that were established in 2007 when the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance was first adopted. And they are all mechanisms which, at the end of the day, are meant to incentivize more affordable housing. So they can be provided by off-site housing units in lieu of onsite. They can be, the requirement can be satisfied by a payment in lieu in some circumstances. Not applicable to apartments, but for example, larger condominium projects, which have been approved by the planning board since 2007. I believe all of them have actually used a payment in lieu instead of providing the units onsite by way of special permit. And there is also an ability to donate land to satisfy the inclusionary requirement with the theory that if it's donated to the Affordable Land Trust, the housing trust in the city, that the city could acquire funds to develop housing. And then there is a final method, which is not, which is sort of a hybrid, which is what we are proposing to do for this project, which is to transfer units that were created at other properties unrelated to this project but were in excess of what was otherwise required under zoning. At the time that those units were reviewed by this board and were also submitted to inclusionary housing, we applied for a special permit to have them count as credit units. And Beverly Crossing and its affiliates have gone through that process now twice with respect to two different buildings, and I'll get to that in a minute. And there are those buildings where they provided more affordability than they would have otherwise been required, that they would like to transfer that to this project. But before we get there, I think it's just important to highlight that since the ordinance was adopted and since Beverly Crossing has been essentially doing these buildings based since 2012 when Burnham came online, I believe, every single project has fully complied with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and provided onsite units without any special permit requests whatsoever. In total, and this is through the project that the board most recently approved at the Ford site, 211 and 199 Rantoul Street, there have been 403 units created while the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance has been in place by Beverly Crossing or its affiliates. 50 onsite affordable units have been created by this developer during that time. I dare say that they have probably developed as much, if not more than affordable housing onsite than any other developer save the Y or Harper Light during that time. And as you can see, the level of affordability was consistently at 80% up through the 480 Rantoul Street project, when the city, recognizing that there was a need for a more diverse range of housing alternatives for affordable units, implemented incentives to actually produce units with greater or deeper affordability, if you will, at 60% maximum of AMI. And at that point, Beverly Crossing took advantage of that and at Canvas, still onsite, developed seven units capped at 80% and seven at 60%. So the question becomes, why for this project, why credit units and why not doing it onsite? And I think the answer to that is very similar to the discussion that Chris Copeland had in response to Ned Barrett's question about why six stories. This building and this site do have particular development challenges and are going to require an overall, a more expensive budget overall. Some of the elements for that are the two-story parking garage underground to deal with parking, more expensive building details and materials. more expensive building details and, and materials. And also, not, not insignificantly, there's a significant portion of the ground floor that is retail here, which we have, obviously are optimistic that those spaces will be, will be rented, but they do tend to take a little bit longer to come, to come online and to stabilize for these projects. And I think that matched with the track record that you have, we determined that it made sense for this project to seek permission to use the credit units that we established to satisfy the inclusionary zoning. And I think then, so the way that we're going to do it, we'd like to do it, is, bear with me. There are basically two projects here. The first is at 2 Hardy Street, which is in back of the building at 131 Rantoul Street, flats at 131. And this project is actually one that Beverly Crossing advanced itself several years ago, probably going on four years ago now. It was approved as a six-unit building, all with two bedrooms, onsite parking. It was sort of a, a housing, it was its own sort of diverse housing option that the company thought made sense after developing 131. Along, along the way, the company was introduced to Harbor Light Community Partners and Andrew DeFranza, and learned at the same time of the city's desire to enhance the affordability and the levels of affordability for, for affordable housing and inclusionary housing. And they basically struck a partnership with Harbor Light where this land was, this land after had been fully approved and permitted by Beverly Crossing for the development of the six units. They basically donated the land and that permit and, and those approvals to Harbor Light, which would in turn construct the, the property and manage the rental and the lottery and, and so forth and provide, I believe there might be some supportive services involved with this project as well. Harbor Light is going to leverage this donation by providing units that are, that satisfy our ordinance's requirement for 60% maximum AMI, but they actually will provide deeper levels of affordability. And three of these units will be rented to families whose average median, whose income does not exceed average, 30% of the average median income in the city. And the other will be capped at 50%. That's a significant bonus that we figured, that we consider this project to offer. And I think it's also important to note that it's, it's being offered in a six-unit building as opposed to a 28, 38, 78-unit apartment building, which there is a need for more housing for families. We think that this will be a more appropriate housing alternative for that reason, because it's, it's, it's just smaller and, and more amenable to family living. So that is a project that this company is extremely proud of. And again, the planning board has previously voted to approve all six of those units as credit units, and those will be brand-new construction. The second project, you can't really see it here, but it's at 461 Rantoul Street, which is basically on Rantoul Street across from the CVS near the drum shop. And it is, it was an existing building that was acquired by the company after the Harbor Light project was put in motion. The idea was to acquire enough units to satisfy the credit unit requirement for this potential project in, in its entirety. This building was, and is, six three-bedroom units, so it offers a diversity of the number of bedrooms that none of these projects typically provide. And two of those units have been restricted to families whose income does not exceed 80% AMI, and the remaining are restricted to 60% AMI. Hopefully I have some pictures. So these are photos of the renovated units at 461 Rantoul Street. As you can see, they're fully appliance, with new appliances. I believe that is granite countertops and new bathroom fixtures, new kitchen fixtures. Three of these units have already been renovated and are occupied, as we speak, by tenants at the 60% AMI level. Two of the tenants were actually former tenants of the building before renovations and were, with the assistance of Beverly Crossing, were able to qualify for the lottery at the 60% AMI level and were moved before and after construction and now live in newly renovated units, something that the company is also very proud of. The floor, this here is a, a plan of the approved building for 2 Hardy Street based on the, the modifications that were approved by this board at the request of Harbor Light Community Partners, along with sample floor plans. You have those materials in your package. I know they're a little bit hard to read here. An example of proposed finishes are shown here.
Ms. Gordon, could I interrupt you for just a minute?
Of course.
The, the units, all six of the Hardy Street would be applied, and how many from 461 Rantoul? Is it three?
So all six of the Hardy Street would be applied, and we need nine in total, so three from...
Three from 461.
Three from 461.
Thank you.
Correct.
Three, three beds.
I believe that that concludes it. I, I know there's a lot to get to, so I, I don't think there's a need for us to go on any further, but I, I hope that that was helpful, in particular to clarify some of the information and questions that have been out there regarding the affordable housing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll get that list down. We'll work on it. Which one is it? Hmm? The three bedroom?
Okay, I'll use.
Okay, I think what we'll do is hold off on our questions and give the public a chance to, to speak on this. First person up is Stella Siemens, and if I butcher your name, please don't take it personally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Stella May Siemens.
Stella May, I'm sorry. See?
Fine, that's fine.
Could you give us your address, please, for the record?
840 Hale Street. Beverly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Thad, for all the redesigns that you've been incorporating. You listened, you listened to the last meeting and what went on. And thank you, Miranda, for the affordable housing. I'll just be brief, because I've already signed that. I, I, I hope it will be even further reduced, maybe those, maybe two more floors pushback. I just, it's the size, where it is in that historic district that I am very greatly opposed to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Butterworth?
Hi. I was just signing.
Okay. Thank you. Lynn Huber?
Pass.
Folks, you're also welcome to use the podium if that's more comfortable for you. Whatever's easier, that microphone's a little better.
This good? Yeah. Oh, that better?
Your address, please?
Butmann Street, 26 Butmann Street?
Pull the mic closer to you. Just boom, yeah.
This? Okay. I just want to say that I agree that it's still not enough, and that also I agree with folks who have talked about this, that the historic nature of that space and the entry from the railroad station into Beverly is more important than we're giving it, than we're showing it to be. And also, I'm really disappointed that the public space, which is already there, will stay there, but the depot too, public space is really retail space and not really something I would want to hang out in unless I have coffee. I'm looking for somebody to eat or whatever. So I don't support this revision, and I hope you go further. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you check to see if that mic?
I was just going to say, can we have somebody back there check that mic?
Well, I think it's...
Oh, well, he's gonna...
Let's use the ones up here for now. Sure it's on. They're all already on. It's at the, it's at the controls. It's not at that.
Okay. Next, next person up is Bruce. Is it Dias? Dias?
I know.
He was here. I don't know if he's...
Can someone speak into it?
Testing, 1, 2, 3.
Try again.
Testing.
It's the best I can do. I don't know.
That's better. Thank you.
Sorry.
Barbara and Bill Kusma?
All set. We're all set.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Paul Kotakis. I live at 131 Rantoul Street. Just wanted to say, I think more often than not, people come out to oppose the projects and not necessarily just before the projects. I, my wife and I both moved here about a year and a half ago, and we chose to sell our old 1800s Victorian down on the South Shore and moved to a small new apartment in the North Shore, where we fully intend to raise our daughter, and we're in the process of adopting a second child, and we've made the flats our home. And although, you know, my wife and I talk about the fact that we're probably going to lose our view of the river when the building goes up across the street, I mean, judging by the plans that I'm seeing here, I think they'll have something equally as beautiful to look at. So I just wanted to speak in favor of the project.
Thank you very much. I think it's Brian French?
Yeah, I, I have no comment. I didn't know why I needed to put my name.
Okay.
There's various reasons. It's not just her comment, but we do use it to...
Amarian Dequila?
Sharon McGrath, 12 Weber Ave, a lifelong resident of Beverly, and I disagree wholeheartedly. I think this project is too big, it's too much. We have saturated this section of Rantoul Street. It is far too congested for the residents who have lived here for all these years, and I think enough is enough for Rantoul Street.
Thank you.
No.
I can't read this at all, so someone who lives at 8 Beverly Commons Drive? Dan Barsher?
Pass.
Hmm?
Pass.
Pass.
Yes, I'd like to add my voice as well to improving the... Pardon me?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dorothy Hayes, 680 Hale Street. As far as the building goes, in terms of its style and design, it's just, I think, unfortunately, like many other of the buildings that are going up on Rantoul Street, nondescript, not particularly inspiring, and not at all connecting with the history of the area, which was a railroad station. And it's extremely disappointing that Casa de Luca is being torn down. The offer to move it somewhere sort of misses the point in terms of the context. It was part of the real estate character of Beverly. So we're losing history. And some of the iconic buildings that we are losing in Beverly, I think there'll be a point where, I don't think we'll be remembered for these buildings, but for what we're losing. And so with some creative architecture, I think it could be incorporated into a much more interesting building. And I have to close with saying that the tax credits were frankly a very disappointing situation, especially when it was represented to mass historic that buildings would not be taken down, and in fact, they are. So that's my comments.
Another name that I can't make out, so I'll give the address. 7 Pierce Avenue?
I'll pass.
Okay. Barry Chekio? Checchio?
Checky.
Checky.
I came down here to speak about one particular parking issue, so...
See you next month.
Well, okay. My building design change.
Would you like to make your point now?
I'd like to.
All right, go ahead.
My name's Barry Chekki, 116 Rantoul Street. I'd like to ask Thad what, on the corner of Pleasant and Park Street, what that's currently used for?
Pleasant and Park. It has parking lots.
And what does that parking lot use for?
I can tell if that price car on the way to the...
And...
If it has some of the construction vehicles, you're not sure.
Well, it was, back when you did the Veterans Building, it was designated for parking for the, for the veterans. There were 10 parking spaces that were allotted on that property.
I believe that that was a temporary arrangement that was intervening between the time that you thought that these built and the parking garage was constructed. And maybe that people are still using it, but the arrangement was supposed to be done.
My, my recollection of that in the meeting was that the motion was made to approve the parking, excuse my voice, because the veterans only had really two parking spaces. There's 32 or 34 units in there. And the motion was made at the board that they would approve it if those 10 spaces were designated across the street for the veterans. I'd like the board to check that, or the planning department to check that.
We will, but I will say that it's, it's not my recollection that our approval of that, of that plan included that part. I could be wrong, and we'll certainly check on it.
Whoever the, whoever the gentleman was that was sitting over here made the motion. The board's changed now. I can't remember his name.
Certainly something we can look into.
We can certainly check into it.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because I, I don't believe there was anything temporary about it.
We will certainly check into it and report back.
Okay. And that was my only parking...
Okay.
...issue tonight.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. John Hill?
Hall.
Hall?
Yeah.
Thought I had it, because it was...
Yeah, hi, my name is John Hall. I live at 143 Collins Street, and I also own a graphic design business in Porter Mill on Rantoul Street. And I'm a member of the depot... And I'm a member of the Depot Matters Group, and we all plan to sort of say different things tonight, hopefully briefly. I moved my studio at a Rantoul Street 10 years ago because I saw great potential for the street and wanted to be part of its rebirth. While quite rough around the edges, I love the industrial vibe of the area and hope that over time, many of the historic and industrial spaces would be given new life through adapted reuse. Along with some newer residential buildings integrated into the fabric of the street, I picture a unique neighborhood that celebrated this industrial past while giving it new life for the 21st century. On a grassroots level, I'm happy to see that many young entrepreneurs also saw this potential and have converted some of these great spaces into restaurants, breweries, caterers, galleries, and other creative businesses. Some of the newer housing developments, such as the Holmes Building and 131 Rantoul, also do a fair job of blending into the streetscape and add important, important new housing and retail spaces. But I've been very disappointed to see that too many of the other new development projects consist of extremely dense five-to-six-story full-block apartment buildings, most designed without any sense of place. And I feel that the city is paying little attention to other aspects of what makes for an inviting urban area, such as creating new open spaces, encouraging a mix of more modest-scale housing options, and prioritizing preservation and reuse of the few remaining historic structures that are unique to Beverly. It is this mix of elements that will keep Rantoul Street from becoming just another strip of large generic apartment buildings, and this block, more than any other, has the opportunity to integrate some of those missing elements and retain a space that is uniquely Beverly. But the current Depot Two proposal, even with the new, the few new design concession, destroys three registered historic buildings, and with them, the historic scale that is an important element in preserving the character of what is really the only meaningful public open space on Rantoul Street. While I realize some of you may consider it beyond the planning board's role to look at these more holistic planning issues, I believe that there are several specific aspects of the proposal that you do have jurisdiction over that could limit what I consider a wildly out-of-scale and inappropriate development for this very public and historic square. Number one, special permits should be just that, special, and should not be given just so a developer can maximize their profits. The request for a height variance at this large parcel appears to be just such a case. As this new development abuts the only public open space on Rantoul Street, every citizen here and throughout the city who believes this project will cause harm to the neighborhood or adversely affect the character of their park should be considered in the butter with a valid case to object. And number three, if we truly believe as a city in the goals of inclusionary affordable housing, we should require that developers include affordable units on-site rather than be permitted to move them elsewhere. That is what inclusionary means to me, at least. I ask that you look around and note that many of your fellow citizens who have deep concerns about the proposal in front of you, and give this project, that will forever alter the character of this important space, a most thorough and diligent review, and hold the developer to the highest possible standards. Thank you for your consideration.
Bill Squibb?
First, let me apologize to the board for my rambling discussion of traffic. I really wasn't expecting to speak at the last meeting. However, two things. I still believe that City Beverly needs a complete traffic study before any more units are given. And I didn't know that budgetary and financial were hardships in going before the different boards. I would like to, despite the eloquent and very emotional presentation earlier, go ahead and share something with the board. This letter, you probably already had this in your files, is the letter that we know our development used to gain their tax credits. The state was not going to grant the tax credits, so they came up with this proposal. And if you look at paragraph two, and read down through it, you will see that they basically agreed to retain and rehab the existing historic properties because they were part of the area that got deemed the National Historic Register. I won't belittle the whole thing. You can read it yourselves, but this looks like a commitment to me to restore those buildings. And that is the reason they got the tax credits. They were not going to receive them without doing that. Now, I am, hope to come up with some more information shortly pertaining to that from the state. If I do, I will share it. But I think the board needs to address this issue. Granted, the tax credits supposedly went to veterans' housing. They were sold off. It's like tax-leveraged leasing. You can sell fleets of trucks, I'm sorry, lease fleets of trucks, retain the tax credits, and sell them off separately. It's rather lucrative. This is the same with historic tax credits. There's a lot of money involved there. And though the veterans' housing is wonderful, and they've done some marvelous things, what they're proposing here is way out of sync with the City of Beverly, particularly between the post office and the train station, and the three buildings that they intend to tear down. Thank you.
Thank you. To the applicant, I think what we would like you to do is make a list of all these questions that you think you want to respond to, and then at the end, we'll, not tonight, but at the end of the public hearing, we'll let you have an opportunity to respond. Angela Volante?
Angela Volante, 176 Dodge Street, Beverly. I'd like to say I agree with Sharon McGrath. I agree with several of the people who've spoken recently, especially the last person who spoke. I'm against this development. I think Beverly, traffic as ridiculous as it is, and Rantoul Street is starting to... It reminds me of that old movie, that Christmas movie, It's a Wonderful Life, where, you know, Lionel Barrymore takes over and the city changes so much. That's what, that's what's happening in Beverly now with all these high-rises, all these five- and six-story buildings. We don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Vagos? He just left, okay. Peter Johnson?
Thank you. My name, is that working? My name is Peter Johnson, 677 Hale Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I will truncate my comments, but I expect to submit the full comments to the board. I'm pleased to be a member of Depot Matters, and I will, and I think some of my colleagues will also post their comments, both to the petition site and to our depomatters.org website, so that you can read them in full, but I want to respect the time. I would first like to ask a question about the process for the various hearings regarding this application. I understand that there is a provision under the state and local zoning ordinances that if no hearing is held within 65 days of filing the application, the permit is deemed granted. Clearly, the planning board and other relevant boards have begun hearings on a timely basis so that risk is avoided. As we've seen with the developers appearing at the Design Review Board meeting on August 1st with no advance copies of their revised design proposal, and then only releasing the revised design for this project less than a week prior to this meeting, the boards and the public, especially those of us with lives to live and jobs to do other than this project, have had totally insufficient time for critical and constructive analysis. I think it's important for all of us to know whether there is any comparable deadline for conclusion of hearings, or approval or denial of such permits in site review, which must be met to avoid a similar default approval, or whether procedures are in place to document applicant approval of continuances. Are we under control in that respect, or is that something that needs to be reviewed?
I don't know what you mean by "under control," but...
Are there processes in place that ensure we don't come to a default approval by failing to follow proper procedures?
Yes.
Wonderful.
The board has deadlines upon which to make a decision, but they are tagged to the end of the public hearing.
Great.
So as long as the board keeps the public hearing open, those deadlines don't come due.
I'm not surprised, and I'm reassured. Thank you. Now, I'd like to speak briefly about design and inclusionary hearing, inclusionary housing. The Depot Matters petition, our Depot Matters website, and related efforts were organized to raise citizen awareness and support for three principles. First, too big for Beverly. This project is much too large in scale and mass, given its inclusion in the Beverly Depot Odell Park Historic District. We are for development, but right-sized development. Second item is preservation of the Casa de Luca building as an icon of the railroad history of this city. And third is inclusionary housing, not the use of credits elsewhere. Let me address mass and scale. She can do the Vanna White thing and walk around. We prepared this view of Rantoul and Railroad, the corner, not to suggest what the preservation of Casa de Luca should look like, but to illustrate the massive difference in scale between the existing significant cornerstone of the park as identified in the tall building guidelines. Sorry, thank you. We've prepared this view of the Rantoul Railroad corner not to suggest what preservation of Casa de Luca should look like, but to illustrate the massive difference in scale between the existing significant cornerstone of the park as identified in the tall building guidelines and the proposed giant that overshadows it. This is what we mean by excessive mass and scale. Round one and round two of this have made progress.
You're not suggesting that this is a fair depiction of the building we just saw in the presentation on, Sarah?
I am suggesting that these are the drawings from the architect, put together in a corner.
I understand you may not have had enough time to review the latest revision, but this is, this is not the, the, this is not the building we just saw a presentation on.
With all due respect, it is. And where it came from was taking the plans that were submitted, the elevations submitted by the architect, and the point is the scale. It's reduced, the corner is reduced to five stories. It's still too tall. The Casa de Luca building is three. So there is, progress has been made, but there's a long way to go. Now, I'll address preserving Casa de Luca as an iconic, as iconic of the historical railroad depot area. Is the Casa de Luca building, which was called the Walter Hotel, historically significant? Is it worth proceeding, preserving? I'll leave it to the Historic District Commission for now, but my notes go further. On April 25th of this year, the Beverly Historic District Commission issued a one-year demolition delay for the Casa de Luca building, finding that the building, number one, is historically significant, and two, should be pres, too close. Thank you. Should be preferentially preserved. Thank everybody for your help. In 2008, Mr. Samasko said that the ocean and river were the geographical drivers of Beverly's development. The railroad was important, but not that important. So, said he, I'd reluctantly but definitively definitely want to see the project, and this was the garage, go forward and the hotels removed. The garage has gone forward. Now, on another project, same argument, destroy the buildings. In fact, the railroad and that entire area were the catalyst for substantial amounts of manufacturing, which drove the economic viability of the city. I have two examples that you can read on our website. Beverly is a city of ocean and river history, but also substantial and consequential economic and social railroad history. Let's not obliterate the latter by letting a last remaining landmark be torn down, to be replaced by maximum cubic feet of massive monolithic structures. Finally, inclusionary housing. I find myself in a challenging quandary on this aspect. I am very much in favor of affordable housing, especially the work of Harborlight Community Partners. So while I applaud and encourage building of the six units sponsored by Harborlight at 2 Hardy Street, with the site donated by Beverly Crossing, philosophically, I'm dismayed by the ability of developers generally to exclude affordable housing people from their facility and put them elsewhere, away. They belong in the projects. I urge the planning board to deny using those credit units, which can be granted but need not be. In this case, I would urge you not to use those credits in order to eliminate affordable housing within this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Shapiro, or Kirsten Shapiro, sorry.
Hi, Kirsten Shapiro, 12 Mason Street. I speak pretty loudly, so that's good. First, I just want to say, as a new resident, two years in Beverly, I'm not going to cry. I'm so impressed with my community. This is awesome. Whether you are for this or not for this, diversity in ideas and thought is key to making sure this city moves forward in a thoughtful and kind way that deals with compassion and the community we care about and we're trying to build and continue building going forward. I would like to say Bill Squibb is my spirit animal, and I won't speak to the historic preservation, because I feel others have done that so well thus far. I will speak to the size and the affordability. I agree also that the affordable housing offsite is dismaying. This is what modern redlining looks like, and that's what I'm going to call it, because that's what it is. When you decide that you want things to be safe and equitable for everyone, but not in your neighborhood, not in your building, that's what it looks like. So two questions that I have with... So two questions that I have, which I would like answered from the builders, is have you reached out and done any focus groups with the community? And what community outreach have you done? Because it appears to me that not much was done. So if some was done, I would love to hear about it. I definitely didn't hear about it and wasn't a part of those. And if we're going to move forward with Beverly Crossing, which is a wonderful attribute to our community and does good work, and I believe that they do care, they need to show that they care through their actions. And this is one way they can do that. So, just some facts and numbers. This is from massbudget.gov, just so we're dealing with fair, accurate data. A single household income average in Massachusetts for the middle 80 percent, this doesn't include the bottom 10 percent of the population or the top 10 percent of the population, this is the middle 80 percent of the population, is $44,000 a year. I'd like to say that again. $44,000 a year, down from 2009, which was $47,000 a year. So although I understand that construction costs have gone up, median wage income has actually gone down in the state of Massachusetts. At $44,000 a year, to be cost burdened, which means to pay more than 30 percent of your income toward a housing unit, 30 percent of your income, would be $1,100 for a one-bedroom apartment, single income. If you were to take the average cost of the single bedrooms currently in the Beverly Depot One building, they are around $2,000 a unit. That would put a person who makes the average income of the middle 80 percent of the state of Massachusetts, not the country, just to be clear, that would mean that the person is paying 54.5 percent of their income towards their rent. Eighty-two of these units are set to be single bedrooms, and that's not what we need in Beverly. We need families in Beverly, according to the housing report the city did a few years back, which just states that in the next decade, we're losing families and children for our schools. And we also need more than single bedrooms for our retirees, some of which live with some of their children. So a single bedroom does not fit families or retirees, nor does it match the income. The average retiree in 2014 made $26,000 a year, so even combined, that's still $52,000 a year, with a couple living in a one-bedroom apartment in these buildings. So, I didn't do the math on all that, but I can, I'm happy to, and send it in a letter to you guys. My point here is that we are at an impasse. We are at an impasse not just here in Beverly, around the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, and around the country. And we have to put our foot down, because buildings like this don't make sense for them to construct, as they've said. They're asking for a waiver to build a bigger building because construction costs are too high. So it doesn't work for the company, and it doesn't work for the city. So trying to solve a problem going forward that isn't working for either corporation or people seems to be a headway we're facing in Beverly. And it might not be this building, it might not be the next, but I can tell you right now, the building over by Burger King is not full, and the retail space has not been leased on it. So, these are issues we have going forward, and if we're going to be a city and we're going to be smart about this, and if Beverly Crossing as a company is going to be smart about this, there needs to be transparency, work with the community, and an acknowledgement that over doubling someone's cost burden, making someone pay 55 percent of their income to live in a single apartment when we don't really need single-person apartments in Beverly, doesn't work. And to say that you care about the community, and come up here and be emotional in front of a community that clearly has some wounds from the past, and not have taken the time to heal those wounds before presenting your project here, it makes people feel stressed and nervous that they have to present their objections to the project in five minutes, two minutes. It makes the board feel like they're pressured to make decisions in a fast timeline. But October is delusional, in my opinion. And I just hope that we keep in mind what's affordable, and I respect Beverly Crossing, and I hope that in the future, you'll work more with the people of Beverly.
Thank you.
Mark White, 4 Aggett Street. And I certainly agree with many of the speakers tonight, Sharon, Dorothy Hayes, and John Hall over at Porter Mills. And Porter Mills is a great example of what can be done with the older buildings on Rantoul Street and bringing them into this century, but still retaining their, you know, their character. You know, and somebody spoke to earlier about hardships, and you know, if a hardship is that a corporation doesn't make enough money because they need us to give them waivers to make money, the corporation is, you know, abusing, in my opinion anyway, the people, you know? I'll even jump to Thaxton and say, I mean, three houses on that lot, if they can't make that work without doing a buffer thing, then you don't make it work. Buy, you know, two houses. But to them, to give them the sixth floor because they need that to make their building profitable, that's what we do? That's what the city of Beverly does? That's what the people are asked to do? To give Windover slash Beverly Crossing a profit? I didn't know that that was what we were supposed to do. I thought, you know, if you're in the business of construction, you make a profit with your business, not by asking the taxpayers to give up rights that we have, and certainly not to give up the character of our city, to come off the train and to see that monstrosity that... I mean, I will give Thad credit, yes, it looks better than the original one that he proposed to us at the Ward Two meeting, but it's still a monstrosity. It's huge. It's beyond belief what they've done to Rantoul Street. I mean, Rantoul Street is a canyon now. It's not even... I grew up in Beverly. I worked at Sunray Bakery down on Rantoul Street. I walked those streets. I delivered bread to the other businesses there. I lumped sacks of flour up to Delight Donut, which is now, you know, probably on their site list for building some other monstrosity. But, you know, this is what's happening to our city. This is what's happening to Rantoul Street, and it makes me ill. And to think that that beautiful historic square is just going to become another giant building sitting on the corner, and we're going to... You know, we have the opportunity to stop this. We have the opportunity to change this, to... You know, it hasn't happened yet. I hope that we can.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think the plan is to wrap up this portion of our meeting tonight by 10:30, because we still have other agenda items we have to get to. If there is anybody who wishes to speak on this, who will not be available on September 10th...
Yes. September, yes.
I usually mess it up, I know. I did it this time. Please step forward. Otherwise, we'll, as I said, we're going to wrap this up at 10:30 and then move on.
Can I speak?
I will be...
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me speak. I'm a business owner on Rantoul Street, so I feel it's a little bit different than some of the residents that have been speaking up.
Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Jackie Maldow. I own Jackie's Teas and Customer Apparel, 238 Rantoul Street. I want to thank the Beverly Crossing team. I feel like they've dedicated their time, their energy, to step up and fix up an area that when I first moved to Rantoul Street as a business owner, I was embarrassed. It's kind of like it was a ghetto, when people said, "That's where you move to? Why?" And I feel that I've gone to their office six or seven times now, and every single time, Chris, Kristen, or Bruce, Bruno, has shown me the plans, has explained what they're doing, and, you know, they bought the land. They paid the money for the land, and now we're telling them, "Look, we want..." Actually, we're not telling them what we want. We're not saying, "Let's build a colonial building." We have no... We're just telling them what we don't want. Nobody's gone down there and said, "Hey, how about you do this or that?" I think that now dilapidated buildings are embarrassment, and when he showed the picture of the way the press box looks, I think it's time to do something, and if we wait too much longer, it's going to... They'll lose interest, and who knows what will happen next. But I do feel that the Beverly Crossing projects have all been very beneficial to Jackie's Teas. I actually now have clients that can afford to shop with me, and I'm going to stay afloat because of them. Instead of, we used to find hypodermic needles behind the building, and I feel way more safe now in my neighborhood, and I feel that the building is actually beautiful. I think they've put 70 percent glass. I think that we're making a big deal about something being big, where nobody ever went to Rantoul Street, anyway. Everybody was at Cabot Street. And I think that if anybody had a better plan for them, maybe they should speak up. But right now, I think that it's a nice, modern look, 70 percent glass, there's a courtyard, we can all go to the park, where nobody goes to that park now, anyway. And I just really want to thank them for listening. Anytime anybody has any suggestions, and their doors are always open, right on Rantoul Street, where they want their residents to live in a beautiful neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Remember, folks, two minutes, please.
Hi. I talk loud, too, so I don't think I need the microphone, but my name's Andy Friedman. I live at 32 Butmann Street. And I just wanted to say, to respond a little bit, that no one's saying that we want nothing done there. It definitely needs to be fixed up. But we're saying we don't want this building. It's too big. The scale is all wrong. There's really, I don't see anything special about it, and those two buildings are historic and they're special. And I was very struck, when I walked into this room today, that this room has these adorable little block buildings of Beverly. And the reason that these buildings are here is because this is what Beverly represents to us, our historic buildings. And to tear these buildings down and just throw them aside, after we were, the builders were given all this money, all this tax, all these tax credits, to save these buildings, is just unacceptable. And the other thing I want to say, and I want to just reiterate what other people have said, is that it is unacceptable, even if you build this building, to take the affordable housing and warehouse it somewhere else. Separate is not equal. Thank you.
Uproar Rick Marciato, 141 McKay Street. I'll just hit like one of the key points. I go back quite a ways, like sum me up on the planning board doing. The zoning was changed. A thousand, per 1,000 square feet, we were allowed one unit, and 1.5 parking spaces was necessary. Right now, there's .66, or almost 29,000 square feet, that's 29 units, is what it was years ago. They've changed it. Right now, we're getting 29, 29, 29, and almost another 29. They've increased it over four times, and they're not going to have any inclusionary housing the way that we've, we should have. So I was going to say, just don't change that, keep the inclusion, make them have the max inclusionary housing for this building.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Omen, 26 Broadway. Just from an aesthetic standpoint, I think that the redesign is definitely better, but it's still totally nondescript. It combines three styles, and it's not only dizzying, it's disorienting. There's nothing inspiring about it. That could be anywhere. It could be in Wyoming, it could be in Texas. There's nothing that shows any historical significance to New England or the North Shore. I think that it's a definite leap from where we started, but I think the combination of styles makes no sense. You know, there's like every section you look at, you see a different sort of layering of window or pattern, and this is like an opportunity for historical significance. Obviously, you know, it's taking away historical significance. You might as well replace that with something that attracts people or attracts some sort of, you know, sense of place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Matthew Nugent. I'm at 8 Fine Street in Beverly Farms. I'm going to be very brief and quick to the point here. I'm going to thank Chairwoman Hutchinson and the members of this planning board for your time to be able to speak this evening. I urge the Beverly Planning Board to carefully consider, before issuing a special building permit to the developer of Depot Two on Railroad Avenue. This development is slated to replace four historically notable structures bordering the south side of Odell Veterans Memorial Park, an end historic district of Beverly. Please take into account any possible detrimental changes to Beverly citizens' quality of life, especially with regard to the project's sizable scale, and potential impacts upon the adjacent, currently sunlit green space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Younger, 32 Butmann Street. I'll be very, very brief, because it's way past my bedtime. Sorry. Way past my bedtime. Be very brief. I've got a lot of texts from a lot of people who couldn't stick around, and I think, to be fair to them, I implore you, Madam Chairwoman, that at the next meeting, you hold it in a forum where people have more time to speak, where there's good ventilation, where there's good optics, and where we don't all have to sit around waiting. The only people that are getting paid in this room tonight, there aren't many. Thank you.
Ken, excuse me. Ken Smith, 27 Linden Avenue. What have we heard tonight? We've heard we've got to chisel a little bit on parking spaces so we can afford to do this. We've got to chisel a little bit on height so we can afford to do this. We've got to chisel a little bit on onsite housing so we can afford to do this. Isn't it time to tell Windover to follow the damn rules?
I just want to address the gentleman for a minute. I think it's disrespectful to Windover to suggest they're not following the rules. They are following the rules. We may not, you may not like what they are asking, but they're well within their rights to ask for that. I think it's important, as this goes on, and it's getting warm in here, and I think emotions are rising, that we keep this the way it started, incredibly respectful. We are Beverly, we are better than that, let's keep it respectful. That's all I would ask. Thank you.
The next chair lady, may I respond?
I'm going to ask the next person up. Thank you.
I may be better off without a microphone. It seems to be making a little noise. My name is Jim Dawson. I live at 6 Waldemar Avenue in Beverly, and I will respect your directive to be brief.
I appreciate it.
I've heard a lot of very thoughtful comments tonight, and I've listened carefully, and I can understand that there is debate over whether this project should go forward or not. But I've been a lifelong member of, resident of the city of Beverly, and that neighborhood needs something, and I haven't seen any other plans that excite me or that would be something that would support what many of the members of the audience are asking for. I'm pleased to hear the developer talk about the tax credits, that was an issue I was concerned about, and I'm pleased to see that a lot of changes have been made to the design of the building and the scale. And so I do support it, and I'll stop there.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Susie Lamont, 24 Porter Street.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you have to speak up.
Susie Lamont, 24 Porter Street.
Thank you.
Is that good? I just, I'm going to hold my remarks for the next time, but as a member of the Depot Matters group, we did plan to submit the petition to you tonight, so I have some copies I'll just bring up. And I just want to emphasize that we know that the petition, the number of signatures aren't reflective of maybe everyone, but how many people in this room signed this petition? Exactly. These people are real. There's a 1,891 signatures on the list. It was created to bring up awareness in the community, and we did that. And I thank everyone for coming, for or against. Your voices are important, and I want to submit this, the list of people who signed it, and the comments that were made.
Thank you. Okay, can we, can I, can we have a motion to continue this public hearing for our next, for our next meeting, September 10th? Motion by Ms. Motion by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Ms. Flannery. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're continuing this hearing for September 10th.